Maybe looking down west. So I would think for easier site, maybe a yield sign coming into the venue would be more advantageous and safe safety issue.
I got one question for the engineer. With the stop signs, which I think something along these lines would help for sure. Stop and speed is great. The seven foot six lane, does that fit into this whole deal? Like, are you talking like RVs, pusher RVs coming in here? There's one sitting there at a stop sign going out. Lane and then one coming in. He's gonna take both lanes for sure. I just don't know if. That is. Problem with the seven foot six lane.
That is one of the standards for a road.
You're assuming if there's a pusher RV sitting there going out, just hypothetically speaking, it's not gonna happen because they're all gonna come in at one time. But I'll go out same time.
Correct.
But if there is something parked there on that lane, kind of stop sign going out, and we got one coming in, you think they got enough room to make that turn? Because if they can't make it on the corner down there in the county road, they're taking both lanes. I don't know if they're gonna make it there. I just think maybe that we ought to look at the lanes a little bit more, at least for a certain section till they get straightened out, maybe like flare it or something, I don't know. And a follow up question on that, I mean, there's probably big ag trucks that are coming fifty foot trailers coming out of there too. Swinging that left hand turn towards sixteen hundred road would be something that somebody should consider.
And Tate, you're talking about when I'm, if I was coming from the west to the east to sixteen.
Would say probably go three forty eight anyway.
But I'm just, I think that's what you're saying.
I mean.
So I asked the question because I didn't want to imply that I agree with the stop signs. And I think you pointed out some very good points. I just wanted to get clarification. I think what you're asking is if I want to have myself, I want to hear more about that later on after.
Okay.
The applicant, maybe what they're doing.
Sure.
I'm glad that staff waited in those questions, they still follow me in terms of my thinking, I'm just not, I don't know. I didn't want to imply that the stop signs were good.
Um, one more question in terms of just like how that happens to change that county road, put in stop signs, make an intersection through intersection versus what it is now, what what's? What's the cost of that? Who bears the cost of that? How does that get implemented in reality? And is that something that we can condition without approval from Roden Bridge that that's gonna happen?
What do you mean without Roden Bridge?
Or or so. Or yeah, traffic, if if we're changing stop signs on county roads and not just requiring a stop sign on the private road going onto county road, like what's the proceed, like how does that happen?
At a minimum of traffic count.
Okay.
Which the traffic counts in that area were done in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one.
And that traffic count would happen before implementation of this project? Or it would only happen after the events start going and then we figure, then county figures out that we need more traffic control there? Like, I guess, how do we?
You could do another traffic count, but the one that was done is not that old. I don't think that the traffic has increased that much on that area.
I guess the question is, can we just put one in regardless of the counts or because?
Yeah.
Thresholds.
That would go before the commissioners.
Okay.
They're the final say on that. I would, I would make through the traffic study, I could do a traffic count and make a recommendation to the board, but they would be the final decision.
I think that was one of the concerns of many of the neighbors was when that traffic count was maybe done and that I appreciate you, I think it was twenty or twenty one.
Yeah, Larry Record was still performing when that happened.
Oh, was it concerning? It was, I was just wondering, I had heard at our last meeting about how some of the neighboring residents were talking about the traffic. And I was just wondering when that, I was appreciative that he gave us a traffic date, like he thought it was twenty or twenty one, is that right?
Yeah, Larry Record was still here and he retired in twenty.
Twenty one, twenty one. Thank you.
Do we know what time of the year during that year it was taken?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, I can look into it, but.
Oh, I bet it.
I bet it does.
Oh, yeah.
I would say summer in harvest.
What, when I mentioned the travel management plan? I sort of had in mind of actually us conditioning a route ingress egress to the site. And and I've been thinking about highway three forty five as a major access from Delta to the side. Two forty, sorry. As an, as an alternative to what I'm hearing, the problem of Tesman at sixteen hundred really. So do we condition a route, so here's your approval, but you gotta use this traffic route and any kind of advertising of this.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, I mean, you're in the period of asking questions of staff versus deliberation and we saw on the applicant or their traffic engineer. So.
Oh, yeah, we're in the details about stop signs in the intersection. I thought I would add this as an alternative to that.
Keep some language in there. If there's any, any other questions of staff, I'll hear from the applicants and enjoy their evening. If you have anything else to add or if you just wanted to have questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'll probably just field questions. I'm, I think I turned it over to Skip, but you know, he's an engineer and expert in in that traffic field. And I think that it's important that we look at how much usage is on that road. And if we're looking at an event that's, you know, potentially one day a week, how much, how much traffic's actually on it? So I'd rather refer to him and address those questions.
Could you go first and explain your conversations yesterday?
My name, my name is Brenda Brown. I work for the process, I've been in for about four years. And we decided to do this event. We've been doing party rentals and such for several years. I have been a wedding planner for almost thirty years now. So this is just not something new to me. I've lived in Delta all my life and I've been to many venues in Delta County and have traveled all the roads. And none of them are really that wonderful to be traveling on when people are drinking anyway. And there's S and K event centers, there's P Green Hall out past a little ways. There's this new one just right up by where we are planning ours. Yeah, it's a little smaller than what we are doing, but there is one there as well. So that being said, when we decided to do this event venue, I guess, is what you wanna call it, we had come up with certain numbers. I, like I said, I've done weddings forever and my weddings usually consist of a hundred to a hundred and fifty guests. And that's usually times. Out of the almost thirty years I've been doing this, I've had two weddings that have been three hundred guests. So that number, the four hundred number, I'm sure sticking with everyone's head, thinking, okay, that's too many people on that road. That is not going to happen, especially every weekend. That would be wonderful if it did, but it's not going to. So a hundred to a hundred and fifty guests is what we are looking at per event. Yes, we are going to have a few extras every once in a while. And that is, I have spoke to the board members of the hospital and they just had a gala a couple of months ago that I did. And that was a little over three hundred guests. They are wanting to do the next gala at our venue if it's able to be done because they can provide a bigger area for more people. So maybe one or two events per year would be a little over that hundred and fifty, but that's it. So as all of the neighbors here, we are not going to have that many people driving up and down that road always. And it is a weekly or maybe not even a weekly per month. I mean, I'm hoping to have at least two or three events per month, but who knows? We'll have to see what happens. But it's not going to be that many people on that road at all times. And, you know, at a wedding, not everyone goes to these weddings at the same exact time. They're going to be circling in and out, coming in, you know, who knows what time? And we have talked, Zach and I and Jen have talked and we are going to not hold it open more than midnight. We have talked about that. And even at midnight, we will definitely just close everything down. They could come back the next morning to clean up. So there will not be people out on the road at one thirty, one o'clock in the morning. And I just wanted to make that clear to everyone so that you know that we, what we are planning to do. And this is not something that we are new at. It's, we've been doing it for many years, but it just hasn't been our own venue. It's been other venues that we've been providing our product to, okay? So if you have any questions, just let us know. And I did talk to the sheriff yesterday. We had, I had received an email Monday morning when I got to work in regards to some comments that and concerns that he was aware of from some of the neighbors because of traffic and late night parties, the alcohol. And so he was not very happy. But when I went in and met with him, when he heard my side of the story and what we were going to be doing and not necessarily all the stories that he had heard, he was much better. And he was okay with things at that point in time. And he understood more so because he did not know what was happening. Supposedly, he didn't even know that there was going to be an event center built out there. So that being said, once I sat and talked to him and explained to him what we were going to be doing, then he was much better. And he approved and thinks that it will be fine. And he knows that, you know, the road has been the same way for years. And like I said, there's been events all over Delta. And none of the roads are very good in different directions that you go. But it's just how you do things. And we're building an event center that is going to be good for Delta and hopefully bring in money to the community. So it's not like we are just trying to cause conflict or troubles with any of the neighbors. We are going to, we are trying to work with everyone as best as we can and do what we have to do to make this right. And not just be another pain in everyone's side. So I hope everyone now can understand that it's not going to be the four hundred people every single weekend and traveling on those roads, okay? Thank you.
Evening, Commissioner, my address is CO Box sixty nine, Mesa, Colorado. A little bit about me and my background, and I don't say this to brag. Someone ever has actually scared me because I just calculated it. But I'd like you to consider me a resource for all your traffic and transportation questions. But this is the scary part, I've been doing this for thirty nine years. And I didn't realize it had been that long. While I'm at time, I've spent two years with Federal Highway Administration as the state traffic and safety engineer for Utah. I spent three years working for C dot here in Region Three out of Grand Junction. And the rest of the time has been consulting like I am for the products here. So, you know, in terms of event centers, I've studied existing event centers where a lot of the information that I used in this study came from and studied event venues, I'll go up to major league ballparks. So, you know, like I said, I'm here as a resource and I have answered your questions. Could I start with some of the things that we just talked about? All right. So travel management plan. I've done those for bigger venues when there's, there's multiple routes. You know, it could be done here and and information to travelers like signs are an important aspect of that. So a travel management plan could be done. One of my cautions though is the discussion kind of evolved into mandated routes. This is your mandated route. Everybody's got one, they put in the address and it takes them there. The thing about traffic engineering, a couple of things, number one, everybody's a traffic engineer because they all drive. The second thing is, I'm not dealing with molecules or predictable things. We're dealing with human behavior. And that throws a wild card into, you know, things like mandated routes. And we run into this with gravel pits. And I apologize, I couldn't be here last meeting, but I was, I was in a, in a Montrose County public hearing for a gravel pit. And you probably read about that one in the paper. It's been a lot of fun. But, you know, the same things are coming up with mandated routes now. Gravel pit, you know, they can control the trucks because the operator is running them, he can, you know, there's fines and stuff if they don't follow it. But for, for people coming to a place, they're gonna, they're gonna do what's in their phone, they're gonna follow that route.
A quick question on that, wouldn't it force all the traffic under one route instead of dispersing it over multiple routes to lessen the impact? Lessening the impact would not be mandated around because you're.
Yeah, yeah, you're dispersing it through the grid system versus putting it on one. So, you know, you are condensing the impacts.
Right.
So, yeah.
Looking to lessen impacts than. Then you start talking about like neighbors of nine hundred cars going out in the day.
Yeah, and I do want to help quantify the volumes, the volumes on the existing road and the proposed volumes. If you guys have a perspective on what those are. But, but yeah, I mean.
Wait, what's a volume?
Traffic volumes. So in terms of, there is a lot of discussion about the access itself to Tesman at the ninety degree curve. You know, we want this to be safe. We want this to work. I mean, it's not to our advantage to have an entrance to an event center where people feel like they're in danger. So we're motivated to do the right thing. And there's a whole bunch of options that can be done in terms of traffic control at that location. It starts from temporary traffic control, which is actually called uniform traffic control, where you have a certified flagger or an off duty enforcement officer standing out there and manually controlling traffic as it comes in and out. Obviously, that would only be done during events. My recommendation would only be done, if that was gonna be an approach, that would only be done for the hour before the event starts. And I'll, there was a slide, the case showed a little pull up in a minute, talk about. So that's not a permanent thing. It's, you know, we're talking thirty five events a year. You know, so, you know, basically ten percent of the days of the year will be an event. So like Brenda said, it's not a hundred percent of the time when this is happening. So the lowest level of implementation would be that uniform traffic control, which could be done. And I'm not sure that any decisions have been made or recommendations from anybody. I think, I think there's just been discussion about different options. The other option is to realign that access road so it ties into the ninety degree curve. I don't wanna say perpendicular because it's curved, but radially to the curve. And then that could be stop control. It's actually desirable configuration to do that because they've got great sight distance because they come into that and they can look north all the way up. They can look east all the way along Tesman both those ways. And, and my diagram was showed, showed the project access. And it was a little confusing when I saw it because it's labels on the inside of the curve, but the access, as you've seen, is actually on the outside. So, you know, that's pretty standard. You have a driveway coming onto a road, you have a stop sign app, so that would be the nice level. The third level would be what's called an always stop control, in this case, three way stop control. That, that is by far the safest option because everybody's got to stop and look at each other and make a decision. Some of the comments we heard from the sheriff about, you know, ninety degree curve, people running off the road, people driving in ditches. One way to, to address that perhaps is to stop people at that location and have everybody look around. There is a federal document that controls traffic control devices called the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And they have criteria in there for when you can do certain traffic control at intersections. And one of them is, you know, traffic signals have to meet tests. But, but if you're gonna do an always stop control, there's also criteria for that. And it's based on a certain amount of volumes, usually higher volumes, usually much higher volumes than you see on Tesman Road right now. So I could do that study, but I can tell you what the results are gonna be. It wouldn't be warranted for that. But, you know, Delta County can choose that option if they like. It's just, you know, there's a federal recommending thing that that's out there. Who makes access intersection changes, whether it's putting the stop signs? A lot of my experiences with C dot and C dot's pretty clear on this. It's, if there's stuff that needs to be done, mitigation for traffic impacts, then the applicant doesn't. And they just don't do them on their own. In the C dot process, there's a traffic study, there's a concept that's recommended. And then there's a set of construction plans that are prepared. In this case, it'd be pretty simple. And then those plans are reviewed and approved by the county engineer to make sure he's comfortable with what's going on. And then, and then the applicant would install those. Or perhaps, you know, the applicant would provide some money and the county forces would install. You know, there's different ways that, I don't know how county engineer does it, but typically those mitigations are paid for by the applicant. In some cases instructed by the applicant and approved by the county. Let's talk about traffic counts for a minute. The county, those do traffic counts and county engineer provided those to me. And it showed on Tesman Road, I don't, I don't know the exact date of those counts.
There is not an exact day, it's only by year.
Yeah, it's only by year, but, but almost all traffic counts by local agencies are done in the summer. So that would put it more in the peak time than right now, for example.
It's more realistic.
Yeah, exactly. And I believe the number was five oh six or.
Five oh three. I have it up on my computer, so.
Okay. Yeah, it was five oh three on Tesman Road, just to the west of sixteen hundred road. And then it drops down as you continue further west, it gets down to like two hundred and fifty three. And these are vehicles per day. These are daily traffic volumes. And the volumes on sixteen hundred road, no, quite a bit to the south, down by B road was about sixteen hundred vehicles a day. So I will tell you that there is a national guideline and there's actually design documents, design guidance for what's called low volume roads. And that threshold for a low volume road is five hundred vehicles a day. So Tesman Road is three vehicles over the low volume road criteria. So it's, it's, from my perspective, working on interstates and a bunch of other stuff, this is always low volume as roads get. All right, so I've gone through the things that were talked about today. I'm happy to answer or entertain any other questions.
Well, I'm sure we'll come back to it, signage, I think is maybe a really important issue for us.
Sorry about destination signage, like event center this way type stuff?
And I still think that routing particularly many in terms of their advertisement. So here's the preferred routes getting to this event center. And of the website, maybe something that we want to help them encourage, encourage them to do. And, and I agree that dispersal of traffic is always good, but and I'm not sure that highway three forty eights, that spectacularly better than sixteen hundred road. But it is more of a central access from central Delta out there with signage on highway three forty eight going east on D road. It may give some of the neighbors some alleviation of that traffic of sixteen hundred to Tesman. If that kind of routing was done in advertising.
So it's all on. So Brenda, in your experience with events in this area, you know, what's your estimate on where people are coming from and going to in general?
That there depends too, because they could be coming from the Montrose area or, I mean, Grand Junction area. And they, they come from Grand Junction, they're going to probably go to the highway to get that stop sign to go up sixteen hundred road. That's just a more logical way to go. But, yeah, it just, everyone's going to take their own way. I mean, there's some that like to go the back roads, so they will come through three forty eight. It just depends on how long they've lived in the area and what roads they know. Because they're going to take the road that is the easiest for them.
So for wedding events, there could be more of a regional draw, people coming from their places with airports, for example. But if you're doing, you know, a hospital event, it'd probably be more local people that know the roads and they know how they want to get there. So the other thing is, it would be possible to stipulate that in certain advertising or contracts that, that the event center provide travel information. Yeah, yeah, things like that.
I think Steve, that's what you're talking about is instead of everybody having kind of the same route is that they would have maybe different preferred routes based on where those individuals might be coming from. Is that what you're thinking?
Actually gonna do that though, coming out of Montrose or wherever they're gonna.
Well, if they're coming out of Montrose, they probably want to turn whatever sixteen, however, it comes into highway fifty, I don't know.
Well, if they're coming from a late aside, they're probably gonna hit fifty five hundred, coming to sixteen hundred down to Tesman, I would guess.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, I think it goes against, you know, we're dictating.
Where they should be driving, I think it should be, yeah.
I mean, I, all I'm talking about now is advertising really. But what we would encourage them to do in advertising. And on their website, for example, here's the best way to get there.
Well, it might be a good time to talk, to quantify and talk about the amount of project traffic. Kate, could you bring up that? So like I said before, this data comes from actual event centers that we've counted the traffic in and out over the whole period before and after. In terms of some of the percentages and, and things that I've, I've done, look at my copies, so you guys. All right, so, you know, this assumes a five PM start. Events are gonna change, so it's all kind of relative, but just assuming a five PM event start. And you know this because we've all been to these events before, but everybody comes to the event in the hour before it starts. You know, not the wedding party and stuff like that, they're there and they've been there, and in this case, they might be staying on site. So, you know, the attendees come in the hour before. So, you know, we've got assume time prior to four PM, we've got, you know, twelve vehicles for the wedding party, caterers, bride, groom, employees, all that. Now that stuff, they trickle in, you know, maybe the day before, earlier that day. And this would be on a, on a Saturday most likely. And then we've got from four to five PM, the guests arrived. So, you know, I've got a hundred and sixty maximum vehicles there. So how did I come up with that? The Federal Highway Administration has published a book called Managing Special Events. It gets into travel plans and travel routes and stuff like that. Their research has showed for these kind of events, if there's an average of two point five people per car. So it's simply the max, like Brenda said, you know, we want approval to do the rare but, but higher volume thing that's being proposed. And that's that four hundred vehicles. So four hundred divided by two point five, it's just a hundred and sixty. So four hundred divided by two point five, it's just a hundred and sixty.
For their events, is that gonna be the safest or let be safe and the most expeditious for all the traffic? Even if it's once a week or twice a week or whatever for the events. You know, assuming they're doing a hundred to two hundred people. I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, how do we make this function at the safest level for the residents and the, and rest of traffic? Because I hear, there's a lot of conversation about how everybody's gonna leave. But a hundred and sixty cars getting in, you couldn't, you know, all in within an hour, wouldn't fit on Testman Road. That'd be out on the, out on the sixteen hundred Road in both directions, whether they're coming from Montrose or Grand Junction. They're all end up have to be on sixteen hundred of Testament, hundred and sixty cars. If I live further in and I just made it up thinking one every ten seconds, that would take six minutes. You know, just to get through that many cars, you said it was once every twenty-two seconds. That if I'm waiting to get in, that would take me an hour almost to get in. How do we, how do we make that function efficiently, even if it is only one hour a week?
Maybe it wasn't clear on, on how I described that, that one, one event vehicle every twenty-two seconds on average. So I'm just, I'm gonna do the math on, see what the existing traffic would be. So generally, we see ten percent. The peak car traffic equals ten percent of the daily traffic, so we had five hundred per day times point one. Equals, you know, five. So, no, fifty, we have fifty, so we've got one vehicle on Testman every minute. And we've got one event vehicle every twenty-two seconds. So there, there's very little, there's lots of gaps in those traffics, so I don't see people stopping. Out on Testman Road, waiting to, to cross and make the turn. Because they're gonna see a vehicle every one minute. So three event vehicles can turn for every one, one vehicle coming at them on Test.
So maybe address, if there is an issue with traffic, will the uniform traffic control be the best way to manage this?
Well, what I would recommend is, is we don't know, we don't know. And, and we can, we can speculate and I can do calculations and we can use our experience and guess, but. Typically, when this comes up, if there's a concern about something, it's a condition of approval. It says, if traffic and safety problems arise, you know, then you should resolve it. And you can specify with uniform traffic controller or, or other methods as approved by the county engineer. You can make that a condition of approval that if, if something does happen, you've got that ability to implement it.
More input from you on, on the value of having a uniform traffic control versus stop signs or, or anything, or nothing.
Well, when you make these decisions, there's a bunch of criteria, and you brought up a good point about, you know, for thirty-five hours a week. Do we want to affect all the other drivers the rest of the time? So that's a disadvantage of like a, a three-way stop out there. The uniform traffic control, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't see any traffic issues, delay or queuing of vehicles anywhere. So I'm not sure why we're trying to solve a problem that I don't think is gonna happen.
Can I ask you a question? Can I finish? Yeah, sorry. Did you model a second entrance point for this venue at all, any of your analysis? Because, I mean, we, there was a conversation that we had last time about trying to get a second access point on the, on the south side with church or Mr. Greg. Did you look at that in any of your analysis?
Well, it's interesting, because when I, I did this letter two times, and the first time. I didn't address the emergency access, but, you know, it came out of comments and, and I did address it to some degree. But my focus was really more on what, what the fire department or fire experts were saying. And also county code about, you know, what does the main access need to be to accommodate this and get two-way travel? If people are coming out, can emergency vehicle get in at the same time, and things like that. It is a public safety issue to have emergency access, so it's important. That typically isn't covered in a traffic study, so I haven't analyzed a second access point. My understanding that if, I, I'm looking at the daily operations of the event. An emergency access would be just that, it would, you know, hopefully it never needs to be used, but it would be there. And if that happened, then there'd be all kinds of enforcement people around to direct traffic, you know, out. So I, I did not, the answer is no, I did not study because it wouldn't be used in the operational part that I love that.
You're gonna propose a, a traffic, a engineered traffic plan, correct? In this next stage of certification process, if there is a reason to. And you have proposed that with the county engineer and they would, okay. So do we need to get into the details of where stop signs should go, isn't that something that the traffic engineer would propose is the best method?
Yeah, I mean, the planning commission could simply say, a condition of approval is work with county engineer to identify mutually acceptable. Traffic control configuration of the intersection.
And we, we don't necessarily have to try to dictate all this at this point, you're the expert, you're the expert, you guys can agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, thanks for your presentation, just clarifying.
Kate, can we pull up a map so we can see that thing? Let's see that access intersection. That one right there. So, obviously, we're gonna come out on sixteen hundred Road, that's where most of this traffic is gonna come. I feel like, obviously, a, a stop sign coming out of the event is needed, but. I've came full circle, I don't think we need to affect the traffic all day, every day. If they're in agreeance to maybe put a flagger out there, I think it would help just on in mid, you know, I think that's the way I would go. The question is, you're, there's another wedding venue there, you know anything about that, right close to you there? What kind of people are, you know, they throw a shindig, same time you're gonna throw a shindig, right?
Yeah, but hers is thirty-five max, it's a, because she's in a subdivision.
I hear you. So it's thirty-five and that's pretty well followed, or do you know that?
It is, yeah, they, she gets in a subdivision, it's in a home and it's just a small.
And where, where does it come out, is it?
It's right off of sixteen hundred Road, a little further.
That way?
Yeah.
The southern entrance of Dry Creek.
Down.
Down, 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 right there.
So basically, whatever she's putting in is gonna hit this about the same time, does she shut down, give a break around one year?
She shuts down at ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, so that's good. That was that question. Yeah, that's about it.
I am fine with your presentation.
So, this may be a little bit outside of your area of focus with your profession, but on the, on the entrance to the proposed property. Do you feel that it is adequate, given the, the volume of traffic and the size of vehicles to be coming in and out of that access? It seems fairly narrow to me.
We had an image that showed the intersection in a, I think a picture, or maybe a zoom of an aerial or something. Maybe the one with the irrigation. Yeah, right down there. Alright. This image on the bottom is, I think, the best picture we have here. So, you know, technically, there's, there's two access points that come together here, this is the access to Testament. And, and I'm not sure about this one, is this?
That's the, that's the neighbors, this is Testament.
The test person.
Right, Testament's here, but this is your access.
One is, is the lower one. And this, the other one is the neighbor.
So we're going, we're going west.
North is to your right.
This is the U. Need a bigger road. Well, yeah, so we've got two, technically, what is happening is we've got one intersection here. Of these two that come together and go out and tie to another intersection. So there's two intersections side by side. So it'd be desirable to have the access come in, like I said, radial like this, with a stop sign here. So I don't know if there's any way to realign this, so it comes in and both these come in like that. But that would be the configuration that would be closest to what's out there. And we would do a widened, a widened corner right there. I already met with a guy that drives a fire truck and does all the emergency stuff. He said that that corner that is now, he has no problems with taking his ladder truck in there as is. But we would, we would widen that area, you know, to where this is nice and easy to turn in here, there's lots of, there's lots of access. So we'll just widen this a little bit and then come down to a twenty foot wide. And that's, that's what I'm talking about, so coming out, you know, radially from the curve and then tying back into this.
So that'd be part of the access plan that I'm talking about, or access plan, right? Put together, give it to county engineer.
Exactly. So you're thinking twenty feet instead of seven, six flights or six?
Twenty foot is what I agreed to, are you going for twenty?
So coming in with a camper or coming out with a camper, having it widened like that would give you that nice radius to pull right up on the road or pull into the property.
Right. You know, and it's all slow travel speed, low travel speed. And you know, it's like, you know, two ag vehicles meet on a county road, they figure it out. So when you get that rare thing where there might be campers or large vehicles in there, one would stop and with the other one on.
Right.
When talking about the, the volume of traffic. It, it appears very favorable when we, when we assume this is gonna be neatly and evenly spaced over sixty minutes. I think that's probably not gonna be very realistic in, in the fact that I think that window of when the majority of participants are gonna arrive is gonna be shortened to a quite narrow window.
Well, we've seen them dispersed, but there is a certain amount of queuing, you know. We've all been there, there's a slow driver and other people want to go faster, so it might be groups or queues of, of. Or platoons, I should say, of more than one vehicle, and they're not a spray style draw right there. So, so I agree with you that when I say an average of twenty-two, it's probably not gonna happen like that. There's probably gonna be a few that come in, then a longer gap, maybe a minute or two, and then a few more that come in. But, but the background traffic is very consistent, that, that, you know, five hundred vehicles a day or fifty an hour. You know, that, they're just traveling randomly, so the, the gap where people can make a left turn off Testament, that would be more consistent. And we're still talking about, you know, more than a minute between those competing conflicting vehicles. So then traffic will bump up to some degree, but I don't think the background traffic.
One question for staff, Kate, did we ever receive a response from Delta County Road and Bridge on any comment?
Not Runbridge specifically, no.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
No questions at this time.
I, the only question I had, I went up there today to talk about, you know, mandated route, which is our phones. My phone tried to send me up Old Testament, which has that barricade on it. I mean, without like, you know, talking to Google, can we do anything about that?
That's about it, I've had to do that at my private residence, I live in the Twilight Zone, because my road, there, there's Golden Drive and I'm on East Golden Drive. None of the programs recognize my address or the mapping, so I've actually had a petition Apple and Google to do that. And there's, I haven't, I haven't checked, the Apple, I've got an iPhone and the iPhone works okay. I think it was more, or the Google map. But there is a formal way, if you just Google, you know, notifying of road changes or something.
Can I say something for that? You know, if you've been to a wedding, most people that do weddings, they put balloons like all the way down the road to.
You know, if you've been to a wedding, most, um, people that do weddings, they put balloons like all the way down the road to the event. So, and everyone that I have been to, they've done that, they've put signs on the highway. And as you drive it up a little bit further, they'll put balloons there or some kind of signage. That is usually done almost at every event that I've ever been.
You bring up a good point, because the mapping is not always accurate.
So any other questions of staff and or applicant before we go to public comment?
I'd like to explore the fire suppression a little bit more, I, I felt we didn't get very far. On that, had questions about it with respect to, uh, water, fire hydrants and things. And now I see this price for fire hydrants looks. Like a lot. But I'm not quite satisfied, Mr. Brock, with you. I mean, I, as you talked about last time, we'd rather lose a building and lose people, and I understand that. But I I still wanna try to make sure that we have some sort of understanding of fire suppression in the building. I understand that in a commercial kitchen, you're going to have a fire suppression requirement on a stove. Under, um, public health laws, is that, is that right?
Yeah, if you had, if you had a fire or a gas. Um, stove, you would, you would have to have that.
But but doesn't, doesn't the, um. Restaurant guy with our health department say, when you're putting in a commercial kitchen, you've got to have. An automatic fire suppressor over your stove?
It depends on what kind of stove it is, and, you know, we're not required to put one of those stoves in this, in this particular building, but. You're right, if you're just asking about a stove and you gotta put it in a restaurant, there are certain regulations to go on.
I thought there was, and you know, that's obviously the, one of the big issues of a restaurant. Commercial kitchen kind of things. Yeah, I thought they were requiring.
Well, this kitchen is gonna be mo- it's going to be catering, we're not going to be cooking per se in, in this kitchen. We're gonna have caterers that will be coming and bringing there, and that will have warming ovens and such for them.
Commercial kitchen.
We said we do, you know, we'd set it up for where we try to do it both, I, you know, but if, if there. Whatever regulation is involved with that particular stove, it, and and if that's required by a health department to have a. An extinguishing hood, they'll, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, I just saw, I heard commercial kitchen, that's where I was starting from. And and that helped me understand a little bit, there would be some fire suppression in the building.
Yeah, it will be.
But I also have a question, maybe Todd can help, give it to the fire guy. Uh, about internal fire suppression, I would grant you that if a fire hydrant extended to the property. Is an expensive proposition. But maybe internal fire suppression through other kinds of means of, um. Fire extinguishing systems could be built in there that may be water, but may not be water. Uh, and whether or not in your own building design, you could think of that.
So with the, with the current fire code that is like in Montrose County, if Delta had one, which they don't have. They, I, so I ran this all through my architect, which is Monda Architecture. Um, and I sent that information to, to Kate as well, he did a design review and went through it and said, basically, hey, if you've got. This many exterior doors, you got this many ways to get people out of there. Then by code, you are not required to have fire suppression. So that's what we did, we ran that through that architectural analysis, had him do a code review on it, make sure that we had enough act. Exits and everything was good to get everybody in there. When, I I think overall, when we're dealing with the volunteer fire department, you know, our structure is always in safety of open. And if Delta's gonna make some major changes, then I, I think that we're gonna, we'll probably save more buildings, but in the meantime, what we're worried about is that safety. And and so we did do that design by an architect to make sure that everybody can get out of the building and, and do that, that well.
She was saying if we had a code, it wouldn't even require.
That's correct.
You say Bill Motley?
Yes.
Sir, he was the architect who reviewed the fire safety, heat grass situation.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not altogether comfortable with that, but, um. Cause I, I still think. Big doors or not, um, you know, if something could happen wrong, it's likely to happen wrong, and that's in a venue with people and. What kinds of games.
It's all one story.
Yeah, it's kinda like a, well, it's got like a little mezzanine on the top, so you could look over there, but, but pretty much.
Can you at least give us some assurance that there would be fire extinguishers inside?
Of course. Definitely at all, at all exits.
So I just, I'm following up, this suppression's one thing, but as far as an escape plan, I mean, this thing's got. I don't see enough doors on this thing, and I'm not, there's no code, so we can't. We shouldn't necessarily be requiring it, but you've designed your bathrooms to ADA standards, so I think that it's reasonable, you know, we have to. Approve, you know, recommend approval based on health, safety, welfare, that there are enough exits. I see one six foot door and a twenty foot sliding glass door that's probably closed in the winter time, those things are heavy. And and I don't see anything else, so I think the plans. You know, I, I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of, uh, certification by this person who's done. You know, that shows that this lives up to a certain code, as far as fire, fire safety is concerned. Not building code, nothing like that, no type of suppression, I don't, I don't see a lot of doors on this thing.
Well, I mean, I have an architect look at it, it's, I mean, based on fire code, it is, it is up to code if we had a code. It does have.
So we, we could condition, uh, you know, that you provide that certification.
Sure.
And then another question is, do hotel rooms, are they open, if there's no events, the hotel rooms open all the time?
We just set it up basically as like a VRBO, if I had a VRBO in, in one of the neighboring subdivisions. I could run that VRBO when I wanted to run it, I assume that that, that same thing would be fine on this, on this property.
So neighbor wants, they got family coming to town, they just wanna run it out, they, you know, just not, so. Could provide a little mass there.
I mean, is, so the VRBO, you're not tying the rental of those rooms or the RV spaces to the events? You wanna be able to rent them to anybody at any time?
Um, I mean, I would like to be able to do that, I, I think that that would be the same standard as everybody else around.
We heard from a lot of the neighbors the last time, I, I'm just curious to know, did you have any additional conversations with neighbors that we should be aware of? That maybe you, you're, you're making some changes based on some of their concerns?
Yeah, we, we talked to most of the, or talked to a lot of the neighbors that were, you know, are adjacent neighbor in Snapple bit. Um, you know, they're all here this, that, at the beginning of this meeting and then, you know, didn't, didn't make it through the whole thing, but. I think we have, we have a lot of support in that subdivision now. Um, we agreed to, you know, shut everything down at midnight, their, their main request. And then they said that as long as we were doing that, that basically they didn't have any other problems with it.
And as I remember looking at that map where it says east, you know, down the bottom, is there a residence right there?
Uh, there is one that sits back in.
That'd be across the street, right, what about on the other side, same side as your entrance, isn't there, isn't there?
There is one right on the corner, yes.
Is there, you think there's any need for screening between them and you? I mean, you've got all your cars coming down there, even if it's midnight, you got somebody's bedroom there.
Well, I think the, the, the natural corner of Testament shines their headlights in that particular house. Every time I go on the county road, our road would parallel their house. And 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 then there's a pretty big berm there as well, the staff took a picture of. Um, I don't think there's, there's much of a reason there, he's got a fence there as well, you know, if something comes up and we need to screen it, I don't wanna cause anybody any problems. But we can do that, it's a little bit difficult to do in that access with unregulated water users. Because all of that is an access.
And the berm is part of uncomparative waters, it's not your berm, right, I mean, they can take it away.
They, they could, but the, the ditch wouldn't be very effective with that.
Kate, did you receive any comments from Delta County Fire Protection District? Yeah, so it's my understanding that you will, um. And then there's another entity that we're waiting on comment from that pertains to fire protection, is that correct?
I mean, based on our conversation with Delta County Emergency Management, we reached out to state. Um, to see if there's any state regulations, since we don't have fire codes, but I haven't heard back from them as of yet.
Um, I know the, the NFPA has, uh, regulations, which I, I believe that's what the city of Delta has adopted. Um, that has a requirement of fire hydrant being within four hundred feet of large occupancy buildings. And based on occupancy, having a fire suppression system installed in the building. Both of which take very large volumes of water. Through the fire suppression sprinklers, it seems like they're putting out a little bit of water, it is a tremendous draw on that infrastructure to be able to provide that. And I, I always think that's something that should be considered.
So if we can get a fire item there, how would, how would they, how would they support that with, can they be, could it be done from a pond and pumped?
It can, and there's ways to calculate boiling requirements, um, I know in some of the more remote, um. Subdivisions and things like that, like in Lock Hill or up in Ridgeway and that, they will put in, um. Burying cisterns and things like that for fire suppression, um, it's, it's a, and there's, there's a very calculated way to, to determine that capacity. Based on length, runtime, things like that.
So, but there are, I mean, we talked about that in terms of even our fire, um. Uh, impact fees, but how they could be spent and, you know. Way back when, we had people talking about underground storage systems to remote fire fighting, um, without fire.
I agree, um, I understand the, you know, cost of running it, and that's not an option if it's not. But I still think it's something that needs to be addressed, I mean. I think that there needs to be something on site, some sort of system to hammer this thing, because, like you said, we have restricted this to. One day a week, none of that, I mean, it could turn into like, this is the craze, and then here we got an outfit that. Have a lot more use than we maybe intended, I think it needs some sort of a design, or. I would go to bury tanks still and get a system design that puts water on those bad boys, that's why I think.
I did talk to, can, can, the, the one Kate from Chi County, that shows the location behind us. So from, from this hydrant to the property line, I believe it's less than a thousand feet. I talked to, I, I didn't have very much luck with our volunteer fire department. Um, and and so I talked to several guys that are on fire department trucks. And they all said, hey, if we're gonna go fight this fire, we are, we're gonna come, we're gonna come in there, we're gonna run over there to that hydrant, we're gonna. Everybody carries a thousand feet of, of, of transfer line with them. We would run the transfer line right over to the base of the hill, and then we'd run two trucks, and they said that's what Delta's got two trucks. That's what they do, would do as well, they really didn't think that there was any, any issue, and that hydrant is, is pretty close. Yeah, we had to cut across the field, but I think that there's a pretty good response.
Fences or any landscaping obstacles or anything like that on the properties that are between you and that fire hydrant?
There, I mean, there's a couple of, of fences, but they all have, you know, with that soft line, it's pretty easy to run it right through the fence. So I, I don't, there's no privacy fences, there's no anything that would have to go over the top of the ditch.
I think we already set a precedence on fire hydrant, so this year, um. Not being close enough to a minor subdivision, so if, with some of the stuff, the whole subdivision, there's a. There's a fire hydrant within a hundred feet of the line, and, uh, they're putting in a new one, so. That's right in the driveway, so on a major event, and that's a little three house subdivision. And this is a major event, I mean, maybe we talk about if they got too much hydrant there, cap that one off, bring a line over, get it across the ditch. So when they're pulling through, man, it's hammered down, I mean, if, if that twelve houses doesn't need two hydrants. Maybe something could be done where that one is yachtsy, bring it on over, which we'll open up, should be able to open up some. And and, you know, I can't look at the future, but if this school was there. Give or take, you know, we can't talk about that, but man, we need a, something needs to be over there outside of this ditch where you just pull up to her and get after it. And you and them, I just really think something's gonna happen.
Are we okay with? Um, we're gonna open up public comment, I'm gonna read from the list, if anyone hasn't, at the end, I'll, I'll just do a double check at the end, see if anyone else wants to speak. I have Ron Hayes first.
Yeah, I live, uh, twenty one fifty three Testament Road. Um, through all of this, when I first found out about it from Brenda. I guess in the back of my mind is, wow, that's a great idea, and Delta County needs it. But what's in it for me? We just built a wonderful house right, spent a lot of money on it, money which was hard earned. Now, I see that the county won't even fix the signs, they're not, you're not even, um, you're not even going as far. As where the major intersections are, where the accidents are. You're basing the traffic count on a two-year-old study, and I can list right now. Twelve teenagers that have just gotten their driver's licenses from these subdivisions, they're driving it every day. So I think a traffic counter needs to be out there. You don't take into consideration that that is zoned ag. There is no signs in that part of the county, because they get knocked over by this large ag equipment, and they don't get set back up. When the stop sign was stolen at the corner of Snapple bit, there in Testament Road, it took. Ten days to get it replaced. That's, you know, I just see the disappointment, you know. I'm also on the board of the Elks, and ever since we required a security guard at our events. Nobody's booked one, so that knocked us out of that. Um, the club manager just verified that. But that's neither here nor there. You wanna do a traffic count, come sit in my front yard all day long, sir. I mean, you, what you read is awesome, you know, but that's not Testament Road and sixteen hundred road tomorrow. You know, you gotta take into consideration in September too, during harvest, silage, there was corn trucks running today down sixteen hundred road. That they're taking to foster farms, it's, it's not just seasonal, it's daily. So, yeah, I'm directing to the whole crowd, I don't, I'm not seeing anybody out, but. My disappointment started off the bat with this meeting to know if this is even a moot point, because what she brought up is legitimate. So, you know, that's, we all could be wasting all of our time right here, right now, until that's investigated. So I think on that, I'll just be quiet and. I welcome my property to any of you guys that wanna come out there during the day and sit and watch. You know, it, it's nice, it's peaceful, I don't think what they're planning is gonna hurt anything, but. You're not seeing the whole picture, and I look around this room. And I can honestly say, I'm third generation California mason, and there isn't anybody, anybody in here that's lived out there longer than I have. And any occupation that can be done out there, I've done. I've even driven a tractor, knocked over a sign in a mailbox, but it was in my heart to always try to go back and do that right thing and put them back up. You know, who's to say when they're gonna move cows down those roads? I, you know, you're not looking at the big picture, so that's where I'm gonna stand.
Jerry Kittinger?
They left.
They left, is there anyone else, I've, I've run through my list, Cindy and Zach Rock and Brenda, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this?
I would have one more.
No sound.
I agree, I just wish when we were having our powwow last time, we would've got a little further and had a resolution while everybody was sitting here.
I think what I remember talking about was a condition that specified that these were short-term lodging. And not to be rented for long-term.
And I think that's still his intention.
Yeah, but I think that restriction would fit within our conditions. And then would escalate to another permit if that type of, if for whatever reason, not even that, Mr. Prock would do it, but some owner in the future wanted to turn that into long-term RV park. And farm worker housing versus. Yeah.
I mean, he gets his whole idea if he did long-term rental. I mean, think about all of a sudden, he's got somebody says, hey, I have a wedding coming up, I'm sorry, I've got those already rented for a month. I mean, that would be really his disadvantage to do it long-term.
Right, but in the future, someone could buy that property and say, well, I've got a tiny home village, I've got a commercial picture, I've got a one communal space in a tiny home village and three, uh, you know, ten units for a long. That's a different.
She's talking short-term, short-term is a good condition. And you know, the the major impacts events.
I say give the people the best chance for income and success.
I agree, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut them, but when we were here last time, it was at the topic that, you know. That changed from the last time he was here to here now with everybody. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I wish all those people were still sitting here so they could jump up and put their due sense in, but they're not here today. We changed the game from then.
And they'll have another opportunity to next meeting.
I'll take that, I guess, they'll get they'll get their chance there.
This is a short-term rental, manageable to you?
It's not me, I don't live next to it.
Well, but it was in a motion, but it maybe included a motion.
I don't think that's what's gonna happen, I think it's gonna be short-term rental and I think it's gonna be rented out probably about hundred and eighty days a year, probably all of them. Nice. I think we're gonna have another opportunity next week to do the same thing, and we're gonna have to deal with it.
I noticed the short-term rental thing is.
So one of the things that came up today, and I throw it up on a commission, is this access realignment. That I think we conditioned, they talked about making that in there, I think we should condition that we do have see some type of access realignment with that the road coming in. We, the engineer wasn't even sure whose road was what when we came into this. And I think if he understood that going in, he would've said it'd be best to be realign that road, I think we should do ask for some type of access realignment. I mean, one of the, do we need new traffic counts? Based on what Mr. Hayes and some other thing, people are saying, I know those are old cap accounts, but they're two years old. That's something that I would, you know, think we discussed or was brought up here from the neighbors, traffic was the issue. I think Mr. Prock is, if he's talked to all the neighbors and feels like he can mitigate their their concerns as far as the traffic that's going there, I'm okay with that. A lot of conversation, Ms. Brown, about just thirty weddings, you know, thirty-five a year. Yet I don't think you'll want us to condition this on unlimited. You know, so essentially, we're we're giving you unlimited if we don't condition it. And that sort of scares me because again, you know, it could be fifty, it could be, it could be seventy-five, it could be three hundred sixty-five events. Essentially what we're saying, that's really, I don't think what we're trying to prove here. We're sort of taking you at your word, thirty-five, even if I hedge it by ten or twenty percent, it's only, you know, forty. So, but if it got into fifty or sixty, seventy, I feel like personally, that's a, that's twice as many. I don't feel like there's enough sense, there's enough consensus to restrict you. But it concerns me, you know, you you said two to three a month. And that, you know, we're not, I don't know that we're gonna agree on restricting to that. But I guess if if you get that many more and the complaints come from the neighbors. There's other issues that traffic, et cetera, et cetera, you may be faced with other other issues as far as fire mitigation, clearly fire is an issue. But I think if we leave leave it for a fire mitigation plan, it's not, you know, that's gets approved by a fire marshal, whoever the authority is, I'm okay with that, too. Other than that, all of what Jacob mentioned, they did agree to a restriction on hours of operations to be done by midnight, I think that's something that's, you know. We did not hear from UVWA, but we can condition it on a maintenance stream with UVWA, and I think that'll just force that. I don't really know what we're saying with regarding the signage and speed limits and special events as far as what we're gonna sign, I don't know how we're gonna make that that motion. You know, that was it, accessory alignment, I think we, you know, we need to make some condition that includes that entryway for larger vehicles, the limousine with the with the bride and groom, and we can't make that turn.
To that point, T. G., didn't you have a condition of here that just was for the traffic, a traffic plan or engineer traffic plan?
Yeah, we'll condition that they work with the county engineer to establish a mutually agreeable decision on traffic control.
And that can be included in that, that'd be right.
So we could request they submit, it's pretty common to submit a traffic plan through the traffic engineer over here, and then he works with the
Recognizing that Mr. Hudson is recommending that that access to that's part, but I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah, those are his words. Yep, but yeah, he's the traffic engineer, this is better agree. That would that would address the a- access issue. That's gonna, they're gonna determine radiuses and all that.
Okay. I'm done.
Um, no, I think that that covers mostly to me. You know, if you were to try to limit occup- or event frequency, I think you look at it per week, like two per week, five Saturday night, you know, that's a hundred four events a year on average over the year. You know, when they, so you could. You know.
Right, but on average over the year, right.
This is a private business.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of restrictions.
Start restricting some private business activity.
I hear you.
Not that it overuse in having it be a real nuisance to the neighborhood, but we get into control and private business interests.
What we did, we did at the asphalt plan, we restricted their private business.
Well, for for reasons that there were commitments, right?
I know, they were seeing their drivers, that's why.
Do you have any conditions you'd like to see?
No, I just as part of the traffic management plan, I would like to see signings, but I think you've had that in there. And I would like, I don't know that we can acquire it, but I'd sure like to see your advertising. You would do recommended routes for people coming from Montrose or coming from Great Junction.
What kind of looms you want, blue or?
But getting it away from Tesman and getting it away to kids and bicycles the best you can.
Jasmine and getting it away to kids and bicycles as best you can in your own advertising makes a hell of a lot of sense to me.
For your interest, for everybody else's.
Do you feel like that would be covered under the traffic control?
Well, I think it ought to be, but I mean, it's like you guys aren't complying with this stuff I bring up. You know, it's imminently sensible. They, uh, but it's sort of up to them. I don't, I'm not sure we can require on the advertised, but, um, I mean, I originally thought about specified routes and nobody was going to pull that. Although we have done that, we did that, tried to do with a solar site.
No impact fee today? We hit the impact, yeah.
Pardon me?
Impact fee, ill. All these.
No, we asked him to take a look at that. I guys said they saw everything, so. It's not, unless they're signed, but that would be an impact.
So I'd entertain a motion. I'll make a motion for approval, to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners for said subdivision, the prom, or excuse me, not subdivision, the project, that's that are with the, with the following conditions. Condition one, condition that rooms and RV spaces be short-term rentals and if they are to be long-term, a separate application be submitted. Condition two, condition that a fire mitigation plan be submitted and approved by the fire chief. Condition three, that music and drink be done by midnight. Condition four, that a maintenance agreement with UVWA is on file. Condition five, that they work with the county engineer to establish a mutually agreeable decision on traffic control. And condition six, the documentation that the building plans meet a fire code. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Are any discussion on said motion? There are none, put it to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye.
I'm going to have to abstain from voting due to a conflict of interest and due to our bylaws. I have to state on the record what my conflict of interest is, and that is, uh, part three of A seven two. I'm going to have to abstain from voting because this commission goes by Robert's rules of order and the laws that I want to quote on the record that constitutionally abstaining and voting are the Colorado State Constitution Amendment 41, A through E, ethics in government, state statute 3020, 28104, state statute 188404 and 188405.
With that, motion passes. As Brock, you'll be seeing the board of county commissioners sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
I got a question. Like on this sort of permit, does it give you like every, some sort of, just forever? So, yeah, we, they are subject to, um, remaining in compliance with their conditions.
Gotcha.
So there's a condition of compliance.
Yep, so we're moving into C on our agenda. Actually, before we do, let's take a five-minute comfort break and use the restroom.
Thank you.
Come back and we'll. We're going to bring back to the table. We have on our agenda Steve, I commissioned bylaws. Let's take it to Carl.
Actually, Bobby.
We just have one sentence from the county attorney. Again, this is the memo from the county attorney. Confidential and privileged legal advice, however, one sentence can be put here. A planning commissioner officer who has served two years in a particular position is ineligible to be really re-elected to that position until after one year has passed.
And in light of the debate this evening, it would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair, that you defer this item and ask for an executive session with the county attorney to actually get legal advice from the county's legal.
Counsel.
Do we need a motion for that?
I, I would, yeah.
I'll make a motion to do what Carl said. A second. So the discussion is we will, we'll come together with John Mayer. We, we've had to do this, this one passed. Go to the big man, we'll ask him all his questions and.
But the way it is right now, you can serve two years, then just not serve a year, but you could always be elected back to serve another two years. As long as you have a year gap in between, correct?
That is correct. And if the chair vacates the position for any reason, the vice chair becomes the chair and then the planning commission elects a new vice chair.
So would that, if that did happen, would that individual just fill out the rest of that term of that person and then still have an additional two years? Or would it be from the time that they took over that position, it would be two years?
That's not clear.
Okay.
Now.
Just sorry, Dad.
But, but I, I will also add, you know, the planning commission is not obligated to have bylaws. So that's, that's something that you may also want to be thinking about. One, if you either want to amend your bylaws.
Okay.
Um, obviously, one thing relative to the, to the membership is not consistent with statute. So that would be one thing. And then if you wanted to have a different conversation about how the chair or vice chair elections work, you could have that conversation as well, provided it's, it's consistent with statute. Or you could just not have bylaws at all.
I have a question. Um, so from what I've read, the planning commission, okay, I'll, I'll reference Colorado State statute. Colorado State statute, um, states that the planning commission shall adopt such rules and regulations governing its procedures as it may consider necessary or advisable and shall keep a record of its proceedings, which shall be open to inspection of the pub by the public at all times. The board of county commissioners has authority to employ experts and staff and shall pay such expensive expenses as may be deemed necessary for carrying out the powers conferred and the duties prescribed in this article. So if the planning commission shall adopt such rules and regulations governing its procedures, what are those rules and regulations?
It said as necessary or as it deems necessary.
Yes, but it still shall adopt a set.
That's, that's the reason for my recommendation. So they're at the county's legal.
As it deems necessary.
As we deem it necessary.
Yeah. We'll, we're going to ask John, we don't know anything. That'll be the best thing.
He's got eight years to get in that.
We have a motion in a second.
There's a motion in a second. A last thing I'll say is that if we do make any changes to our bylaws, it will be publicly notified. We will have a public hearing on it. We're not going to go to this exact session and do a follow-up bylaw. So folks in the room and online, don't think that's what's going to happen. Just know you need to square some things away. Motion for a second, uh, papers in paper, please say aye.
Aye. That brings us to D, department report Carl. Couple items, Mr. Chair. First of all, at the last board meeting, the board asked to have an item on March 21st regarding the solar award forum, which effectively expired March 6th. It was the initially established for six months or until line use code was adopted with standards, which had not happened. And so there will be an item on the March 21st agenda that the board would consider extending that, that moratorium for six months. Also, they've given direction for me to put out an RQ for surveying services primarily for subdivision reviews. So we'll be doing that. And then also finally, the line use code, there is a work session tomorrow at 1:00 PM with the board of county commissioners. And they'll be reviewing a, a red line of the 2021 line use codes, further direction on March 1st at the work session following the public hearing.
Not March 1st.
No, March 1st.
It was from March 1st.
I'm sorry. I was about to say you're public hearing.
So once the, once the board completes their review of the red line, whatever they want to add, delete, modify, it will be referred to your planning commission and you'll have the 30 days to report back to the board of county commissioners and then they will have a public hearing and take action.
So at this point, all public hearing on land use code will be at the board of county commissioners.
That is correct. Yeah. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
What, what are we intended to do then?
Well, they're going to send us a red line.
And what do we do?
The same, same, I mean, the, the way the statute is written is you accept, reject, or suggest modifications. Then the board will take that under consideration at a public hearing.
And we have 30 days to do that by the time we ever see that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I suppose no comment.
Could be.
But that would be an accept.
Are there any other commissioner comments, requests, referrals?
I have a question, where's Lane?
Lane, Lane had catarceria and today. He's an associate, he's an associate member in Victoria's, he's the sitting member. Lane went and voted tonight, so.
They must have missed all that. Oh, Japan. That's.
We're adjourned.
Now you could ask her. Now you missed my show.